Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no religion and justice for all.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vito.
Present.
Counselor Abbot Zanetta.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yeah.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Perlo Tonda.
Yeah.
Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Bishop.
Present.
Counselor Ray Coopero. All members present. Under celebratory resolution, we have a late resolution introduced by Counselor Vito and all members of the city council.
Any objections to the late resolution?
Whereas individuals who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer are referred to in the resolution as LGBTQ, include individuals from all states and the District of Columbia, and all faiths, races, national origins, socioeconomic statuses, education levels, and political beliefs. And whereas LGBTQ people in the United States have made and continue to make vital contributions to the United States and to the world in every aspect, and whereas LGBTQ people in the United States serve and have served the United States Army, Coast Guard, Navy, Air Force, and Marines honorably and with distinction and bravery. And whereas LGBTQ people in the United States have fought for equal treatment, dignity, and respect, and have achieved significant milestones in ensuring the future generations of the LGBTQ people in the United States will enjoy a more equal and just society. And whereas despite being marginalized throughout the history of the United States, LGBTQ people in the United States continue to celebrate their identities, love, and contributions to the United States in various expressions of pride. And whereas the Chelsea LGBTQ Coalition will raise the Pride Flag for a fourth year in a row in Chelsea on Sunday, June 9th, in honor of the LGBTQ Pride Month. Now therefore, being resolved, the written members of the Chelsea City Council officially recognize June as LGBTQ Pride Month and celebrate and support the LGBTQ community in Chelsea and beyond.
Can I have a motion?
Suspension. And for the record, on Sundays, also the Chelsea High Graduation.
Okay, so this Sunday, there will be a flag raising, the Fourth Annual Chelsea LGBTQ Flag Raising, right outside of City Hall at 2:00 PM for anyone that's interested in attending.
We have the public hearing on the proposed FY20 budget.
This is the public hearing for the FY20 budget. Anyone that would like to make any comments related to the budget, you can come up to the microphone. You have four minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Jeanette Velez. I live on 1 Franklin Ave., and I'm also the Chair for the Chelsea Public Schools. And I'm just here to ask for your continued support of our schools, us on the school committee. We know everything that you guys do for us, and we appreciate it. And actually, the graduation this year, because of you guys, is that the students will have it outside. They were coming to us, but it was really up to you guys, and we really appreciate that. So looking over our budget, I know it's hard. We never want to cut teachers or other staff or administration, but we believe in the administration. They work hard to really do what is in the best interest of our students. And I just, they've worked hard, and I want you guys to take that into consideration and continue supporting us. I wear a mother's hat. I could see that side as a parent, how the students feel when teachers leave. Sitting on school committee, I have to see that also. And also, as an early childhood educator, I know the challenges when it comes to education, and the state usually cuts us. And at the end of the day, it does affect our students, our families. And it's very unfortunate, but what we have, we try to work. So again, I'm just here to ask for your continued support. Everything you guys do for our students is greatly appreciated, and we really couldn't do it without you guys. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosemary Carlisle. I live at 109 Sagamore Ave. in Chelsea. I am also a member of the Chelsea School Committee. Tonight, your vote considers 6,000 students in the city of Chelsea. We have to pass the budget. We have to do what we have to do to make sure these children and the teachers in the city of Chelsea get a good education. We are lucky to have great administrators, teachers. But it's the budget. I'm not happy with the budget. We have to change the fundamental way of being funded through the state. And we fought many representatives and senators, we talked to them, to see if they can change it. But I'm hoping, as a city council in the city of Chelsea, you will vote to pass the budget tonight. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Don Deboningo from Metford, Mass., and I'm also the President of the Chelsea Teachers Union. Excuse my voice, so I'm going to keep my remarks very brief. I know you have the inevitable task of passing a proposed budget and a balanced budget. I'm here, obviously, to speak about the school department's budget that's been presented for you. We all know the problems with the bigger state budget, and we know how it affects many urban settings such as Chelsea. For years, we've been saying we can't continue making these cuts on the teachers' backs, on the administrators' backs, on central office and so forth. But more importantly, we can't keep making these cuts on the backs of our children. Many of you are familiar with the State House activity that we had going on a couple of weeks ago to fund our Future Program. Over 5,000 people were out in front of the State House asking for more funds. But we can't wait. I know the budget presented to you is less than what we need, but any other changes, although may seem slight to you, would be devastating to our kids. Exempting them from allowing teachers to give them the programs they need, to have the teachers with the resources they need. And once again, when we talk about funding our children, it's every citizen, student, who lives in this city. Once again, thank you, and I hope you'll vote in the affirmative for tonight's budget.
Hi, everyone. My name's Catherine Anderson. I live at 28 Warren Ave., number five in Somerville. I'm a seventh and eighth grade special education teacher at the Brown. I'm also the Vice President of the Chelsea Teachers Union. And I'm here tonight to, again, urge the city council to pass the school department budget as it's written. Despite a continued lack of resources from the state, the budget works hard to prioritize what Chelsea students need. We're able to expand the extremely popular Camino's program at the elementary level. It adds back a special education liaison at the Wright Middle School, and it maintains the outreach workers that have done so much for our middle school students. It also maintains the French department and the high school. Well, it does include cuts. Those cuts are concentrated where our student population is declining and changing while having minimal impact on the programs that will attract and keep Chelsea residents and Chelsea public schools. Passing the budget as it is would go a long way in helping our teachers, custodians, security guards, social workers, paraprofessionals, clerks, cafeteria workers, and administrators to meet the mission of our Chelsea public schools, to welcome and educate all students. As Don alluded to, we've been working really hard at the state. We brought two buses to the Fund Our Future rally, and I know of a teacher who has a meeting scheduled with Representative Brownsberger in just a few days. So we're doing everything we can to get more money from the state. This is the best that we can do with what we've been given, and it's been very carefully considered. So I hope that it passes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Adam Wildi. I live at 97 Hill Street in Malden. I am the Assistant Principal at the Wright Academy Middle School and also President of the Chelsea Administrators Association. And I honestly just wanted to say thank you. You know, we know, and you've heard it already tonight, that all across Massachusetts, our schools are being underfunded, and that that's, you know, that's coming from the state, but that burden falls on us. And what ends up happening is we end up picking up the tab for what should be coming from the state. But every year, you do that. You support our students because we know that every dollar is a relationship, is a connection, is an opportunity for our Chelsea students. And, you know, you've consistently shown them that they matter, and that even though, as a city council, you're delicately balancing all of the interests of the many city departments that you have to fund, you know, we truly do thank you for your support in the past, and hopefully, we'll be able to count on your support tonight. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Mary Burke, and I am the Superintendent of the Chelsea Public Schools. I am very much in favor of this budget this evening, and I ask you certainly to vote in favor of the budget. I want to thank you, the city council, the city manager, for your ongoing support of our school department, our students, their families. As you know, we have suffered the fourth consecutive year of severe budget cuts, and those are cumulative. Excuse me. And they are cumulative, and they do impact us, and we do struggle. At the same time, we feel that this year, we have been able to do it in the most fiscally prudent manner in trying to minimize where the impact, the negative impact against our students has taken place. I ask that you fully fund the budget as the school department budget as it has been presented to you. And I ask for that full adoption. To do anything less will impact our students in a negative manner. And I ask you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Madam President, members of the council, Tom Ambrosino, City Manager. I'm here to advocate for full support of the budget as presented. It, both the school department and the city side budget, it represents a $6.5 million increase over last year, but that really is a fairly modest 3.7% increase, reflecting, in many cases, just the rate of inflation and a lot of line items. I will say that it continues our robust support of public services in this city and including continued support of our initiatives in the downtown. In only two places is there really a request for expansion. The first is in E-911, where we're trying to keep up with increased call volume. And the second place is the DPW, and that really falls into just two categories. One is a request to fund a new 311 service for better constituent services. And the other is a proposal that we've spoken a lot about in the past, which is absorption of water and sewer department in-house, and that's reflected in this budget and is part of the DPW increase. I'll just close by saying it's pretty much a balanced budget. As in past years, we're using a modest amount of free cash to balance the budget, a total of $695,000, which is pretty much in line with what we used the past few years. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with respect to the budget? Going once, going twice? That portion of the meeting is closed. Public speaking. Anybody else wish to just speak? Public speaking. Going once, going twice? That portion of the meeting is closed. Approval of the minutes. Counselor Lopez moves to accept and file a communication. Wait, adopted or suspension? Seeing no objections, so moved. We also have special meeting minutes from the May 28th meeting. Counselor Garcia moves to accept and file under suspension. Seeing no objections. Communications from the city manager. We have a communication received from the city manager regarding notice of waiver intent from Mr. Christopher Maggio for a part-time position of guitar instructor. Dear counselors pursuant to the Administrative Code Section 11202, I am writing to notify you of my intention to hire Mr. Christopher Maggio, 44 Green Street, Linfield, Massachusetts, for the part-time position of guitar instructor and to grant him a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in the Administrative Code Part IV, Section 11201. There were no other candidates for this position. A copy of Mr. Maggio's resume is attached. In accordance with Section 11202, I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days. Can I have a motion? Seeing none, so moved. I'm going to keep going. We have another communication received from the city manager regarding public safety grants. Dear counselors, in response to the recent city council order requesting information on grants to the police, fire, and E-91 departments, I have attached emails from each department identifying all existing grants, including dollar values and expiration dates. Please let me know if you require any further information on the issue. Counselor Brown moves to accept and file a communication.
Appointments to boards and commissions. Dear counselors pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Chamber of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I'm writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For appointments to the zoning board of appeals, as the associate member, Ms. Joan Cromwell, 38 Addison Street, Chelsea, to fill the unexpired term of Henry Wilson. Term expires June 30th, 2021. For appointment to the planning board, Ms. Sharon Carfield, 26 Breakwater Cove, Chelsea, to fill in the unexpired term of Joan Cromwell. Term expires February 25th, 2022. For appointment to the planning board, Mr. Eric Ian Asquith, 20 Willard Street, Chelsea, to fill the unexpired term of Olivier Del Mel, who resigned. This term expires on October 6th, 2020. For appointment to the planning board, Ms. Sarah Arman, 50 Garfield Avenue, Chelsea, to fill the unexpired term of Indira Alfaro, who resigned. This term expires on September 23rd, 2021. For appointments to the Human Rights Commission, Ms. Del F. Schatz, Hour 9 Admiral's Way, Chelsea, for a new three-year term commencing on July 1st, 2019, expiring in 2022. For reappointment to the cultural council, Ms. Mr. Daqueya Christmas, 67 Cookab, Chelsea, for a new three-year term expiring in 2022. Move to a second reading.
Seeing none, so moved. Thank you, Counselor.
We have another communication from the city manager. Gas usage for take-home vehicles. Dear councils, in response to recent city council order requesting information on gasoline usage by take-home vehicles, I have attached reports from each of the departments with such vehicles, police, fire, E-911, DPW, and ISD identifying the driver and gas usage. Let me know if you require any further information on the issue.
Counselor Coopero. Adopted, accept, and file a communication under suspension. There are no objections. You have the floor, Counselor, and please speak into your microphone.
It seems like, it seems like on these gas things here, this, we got, there's a lot of money being spent on gas. Some places here, some people like a mechanic. He spends over $3,000 just to drive his vehicle. That's a mechanic. It's over $3,000. You're right here, mechanic, $3,672.76. What does he do? Go pick up the pots himself? You know, there seems to be big money being spent here. And then I look at some of these other departments that have cars, and they only spend $100. You know, like, some is funny. Like, you know, for a month, $100, $100, March. There's a lot of money being spent on gasoline. You know, we should cut down on this gasoline. It's kind of expensive. It's kind of unusual that a mechanic spends over $3,000. So what does he go? What does he do? Does he go pick up the pots himself? He must use that car every day. That's not the purpose of that car. The portal cars are supposed to be from one place to the other. They're not supposed to be an everyday car. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lopez.
I agree with Counselor Coopero. I would like to know what they do with the vehicles when they take it home. Should be from work to the house and house to the work. And for them to be spending that much money, that's really crazy. And I would like to know what they do with these city cars, with our taxpayer money, because, you know, it's too much. Thank you.
Okay. Next communication.
The next communication, city council approval of PEG access funds. Dear council, I'm writing to request several votes that are necessary to continue to expend funds provided annually by Comcast pursuant to its cable television renewal license for public educational and governmental access facilities and operations. These votes are required based upon new statutory requirements implemented by the state legislature in 2014. Previously, for the past 20-plus years, municipalities simply collected.
Counselor Rodriguez. Accept and file a communication.
There'll be two orders coming under new business.
Okay.
Two orders, Bob.
Well, can I speak on this?
Sure. Go ahead.
I wasn't too happy when I read this communication. This has been kicking around since 2015, and here we are in 2019. And if we don't pass it tonight, we'll have to shut down the cable office, local cable office. You know, I really don't understand why we waited till the very last minute to put this before the city council. I have questions about how this money is being allocated. Serious questions. We're talking well over $300,000 of the cable access money being used for salaries. Well, you think we should talk about that a little bit? And how the rest of the money is being spent? We're spending $30,000 for translator services for these meetings. I don't recall any, ever seeing anybody use them. Not once, since I've been here. So I think this deserves some talk in a conference. But here we are, saying if we don't pass these tonight, oh, we're going to have to shut down the cable, the local cable office. Shut it down. Let's have our conference and talk about it. So I move it to committee and conference.
Move it to a subcommittee and conference. Moving on.
Okay.
All right. We have a communication received from the city manager regarding soundproofing program. Dear counselors, I'm writing in response to the two recent council orders requesting that I establish a soundproofing program for Chelsea residents and fund it with 50% of the annual mitigation payments from Massport. I am not opposed to creating some local grant program operated through our planning department to provide funding for soundproofing to residents adversely impacted by airport-related noise. Deciding who should qualify for such grants and how to prioritize areas of the city might be a bit challenging. But I feel that with some time, we can work out those details together in collaboration with the city council. However, the council's proposed funding mechanism is a bit problematic. The annual mitigation payment for Massport currently at $600,000 annually, although Massport has not yet agreed to this payment for fiscal year '20, cannot be directly utilized for this purpose. The Massport payment is considered by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue as a pilot payment, payment in lieu of taxes. Accordingly, it's considered a general revenue source deposited to the city's general fund. It cannot be directly appropriated to any purpose. Instead, along with the other pilot payments to the city, it is a general revenue source that supports and funds our annual budget. If the council desires to depend upon this Massport payment to help fund a soundproofing program at the level of $300,000 annually, it must appropriate the $300,000 separately. It can do that either in an annual budget line item or as an isolated appropriation from a source such as stabilization or free cash. My recommendation would be that the city commit to appropriating $300,000 for this purpose annually from free cash whenever available, rather than make it a permanent part of the budget. This way, funding occurs when the city has a surplus. This is similar to how we currently handle the pilot senior transportation program and the pilot bunker-hill tuition program. If we proceed in this fashion, funding should be available upon the DOR's free cash certification for the close of FY '19, a determination that the city will likely receive no later than January of 2020. In the meantime, we could work on setting up the program qualifications. Counselor Coopero.
All right. Can I speak on it?
What would you like to do with this? Under suspension, seeing no objections. You have the floor, Counselor.
I could see what the city manager's saying, but this money comes out direct, and it's from Massport to the people here. And we get it all the time. So why do we have to wait and put it in free cash? It's being used, all these years we've been using it, and it never went to where it was supposed to be used for, at least half of it. It's not saying we want the whole money. So I don't know. What kind of guarantee can the city manager tell us? It says when it's available. So is that saying that Massport is no longer going to give us that money? If Massport's ain't going to give us that money, so this is a wasted order. But if Massport going to continue giving us the money, so what do you mean when it's available? It should be available all the time. If Massport's going to give it to us.
What he's saying is that that money cannot be used directly for the program, and therefore, we'd have to appropriate it another way. But to ensure that that money is available, we should do it whenever there's a surplus.
Yeah, but that money should be available all the time, right? Why not? Is Massport going to stop giving it to us?
Okay, just continue your comments, and then we'll follow up with conversations after.
So I would like the city manager, at least to give some guarantee that this money will be used, some type of writing, that this money will be used for that purpose. Not all of it, but a piece of it. Where he would say, yes, instead of, you know, each year, we will appropriate a certain amount of money for such and such a purpose. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for no more, no less. This doesn't say anything. It just says when it's available, the money will be taken and used. I want some sort of guarantee where that money would actually be used for that purpose.
Thank you, Counselor Coopero. Counselor Jeanette, did you want to speak on it? Okay.
Year-end financial request. Next communication from the city manager. I'm writing to request some final votes to address some end-of-year financial matters, including the need for some supplemental appropriations to cover deficits. The details are as follows. Salary deficits funded by salary reserve transfers, $85,000. Specific amounts are legislative department regular salary, $6,400. Auditing department overtime, $2,000. Purchasing department regular salary, $150. Assessors department overtime, $1,500. Treasurers regular salary, $1,250. DPW streets and sidewalks overtime, $10,000. DPW snow removal overtime, $38,769. HHS administration regular salary, $2,175. Medicare, $22,756. All of these are under new business, all of these orders.
Can I have a motion?
Something coming up under new business.
Seeing no objections, so moved. We have a late communication from the city manager regarding a notice of waiver intent. Any objections to this late communication? Okay. Dear counselors, pursuant to the Administrative Code Section 11202, I am writing to notify you of my intention to hire Ms. Kimberly Lamson, 220 University Ave., Lowell, Massachusetts, for the position of E-911 dispatcher and to grant her a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in the Administrative Code, Part IV, Section 11201. Ms. Lamson has considerable dispatching experience. A copy of Ms. Lamson's resume is attached. In accordance with Section 11202, I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days. Can I have a motion?
Accept and file a communication under suspension.
Counselor Brown moves to accept and file a communication under suspension. Seeing no objections, so moved. Okay.
Communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from city parking clerk Jeanette Sintron White regarding the actions approved at the May 7th, 2019 Traffic and Parking Commission meeting.
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none, so moved.
We have a copy of a communication received from.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
I just wanted to also thank you on a document we just accepted and filed. There is also a Traffic and Commission meeting tomorrow. So if anyone has questions regarding these, it's a meeting tomorrow. So it's probably one of the last ones of the summer.
Okay.
For us to be available.
Okay, thank you.
We have a copy of a communication received from chairperson of the Chelsea Community Preservation Committee, Jose Augustine Arieta Zeladina, regarding two additional recommendations for grants from the Community Preservation Fund. Copy of the communication.
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there's no objections.
He objects to, he wants to.
Send to the committee. He wants to send to the subcommittee.
Yep, Counselor Bishop.
And the reason, ma'am?
Yep, you have, you have.
Yep, you have, you have the floor.
I don't know who owns this building. I assume it's still owned by the congregation. And I didn't realize that we were into the business of funding projects on privately-owned buildings, on the CPA. And we had already funded the three years of the CPA money, and one, it was like $40,000 in administrative costs. And now they want to hire our $50,000 Affordable Housing Trust Fund specialist. So I'd like to talk about it a little, so therefore I'm asking that we have hold of conference on it.
Thank you, Counselor Avellaneda. And please speak into your microphone.
I'll only speak about the CP19-11, which is the request of $50,000 to repair, make repairs of the congregation. I want to make sure I'm saying this correctly, Agudat Salom Building envelope. So it's the synagogue, basically, that everyone knows as the Walnut Street synagogue on Walnut Street. And part, one of the three avenues that the CPA money can be spent on is historic preservation. As such, the congregation has asked that they be given $50,000 to fix what is a historic building in the city of Chelsea. Now, there is precedent of CPA money being used in other communities for religious structures such as this. So this is not the first time that CPA money has been used in Massachusetts to repair and upkeep religious buildings that are by the age and such, historic. I don't think anyone can argue that, whatever the denomination you may be of religion, that this building is, has some historic value to this community. They've welcomed the community as a whole to many of their events, and I know I've seen many of my colleagues in the community of non-Jewish faith to attend. And so, we'll talk about it later, but the fact that this request is there is legitimate under the regulations of CPA. So it can be used for, although private, if you want to consider it private, it can be used for such. So I look forward to the conversation about this and when time to vote in support of it. Thank you.
Counselor Brown, and then Counselor Garcia.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, again, I just want to echo what my fellow colleagues said, but it is a worthy cause. This is a building that's listed not only here, but it's listed as the National Register of Historic Places. It's a building, as my colleague did say, that a bunch of us have been there on occasions to try to support it and save it. It's a building that's been in our neighborhood and in our community for years, well longer than we have been here. It's a building that I think because of the CPA money that's available for this, this is a really worthy cause, and if the money's available, I think we should support this and try to keep this historic and national registered place in our community and do some renovations on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Garcia.
Thank you. And I also want to echo, and I actually really appreciate that my colleague, Counselor Avellaneda, really clarified the significance and importance of having a CPA and what that means to not only preserving historic monuments in our city, but also something so meaningful like the synagogue. I personally live on Walnut Street, and I've seen the wonderful work that the synagogue does to invite different people of our community to several of their events. And I think it's so important, and it's symbolically placed at such a special place. You know, kids walk to school and they see this beautiful monument, and I think it's our responsibility to support it, help maintain it, and ensure that our kids continue to see these places of, not only places of worship, but also safe spaces where they can go attend and express their spirituality. So I will be in full support of helping in any way, shape, or form as a City Counselor in helping, you know, rebuild, restore, and maintain this monument that I believe is so important. And I also think it's important to highlight that I know that personally from being there, that there have been a lot of reparations that have need to be met there, so there is a clear need. So I'll be supporting, and thank you so much for highlighting something that's so important.
Counselor Recupero.
I'm in support of this, too. Historic buildings should be maintained, but there's a piece of this I don't understand, where it says, building, envelope, repairs, and, what they mean, and, and what else? And? What does that mean?
I don't know, but I guess that's a question we could take up at the Subcommittee on Conference. Thank you, Counselor Recupero. Anybody else? Okay.
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business.
Remove from the table the CIP.
It's before us. What do you want to do with the counsel?
Well, we need to take action on it. We need a roll call vote.
Roll call as amended?
As amended.
Would you like to speak on it? Any discussion on the CIP?
Yeah.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'll be supporting a five-year CIP plan first. This proposal that we have tonight continues to help us achieve the shared goals that we have as not only district councils, but city councils, and also support the work of the city. It supports our services that we offer. It talks about the money that we're willing to spend in our water system, our sewer system, better streets and sidewalks. I think this is very important to have this, to move forward and have a fundamental document that we can always look to enhance our future. And this is a great job that we, most cities don't have, but we have in place, and the other we can support it. So I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Anybody else? Counselor Bishop?
I was opposed to the funding sources that the City Manager used, and he generously switched them around and decided not to take money out of the school stabilization fund, and instead use more free cash. And even though some of the money is still coming out of the school stabilization fund, he has also agreed and given his word that if there is free cash at the end of this fiscal year, that free cash will first be used to replace the money in the school stabilization fund. We have a running disagreement on what that fund is and how it should be used. I don't consider it to be a capital improvement fund. It's a school stabilization fund that is there only in case of emergencies, and I hope that we can meet between now and the next, the next CIP approval and determine that this fund should not, if anything, should be looked at last as a funding source and not say, oh, let's just take it out of the school stabilization fund. I know there are a lot of upcoming projects for the schools, and I know that we have to fund them. We, the buildings are now 20 or 25 years old, and there are things that have to be done, and we're gonna have to come up with the money for them. I hope that we can do it without killing the school stabilization fund. In case of a major emergency, that money should be left there.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop. Okay, roll call.
We have a roll call by Counselor Robinson to adopt the CIP as amended. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tijada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero. Eleven in favor and none opposed, motion adopted.
Still on unfinished business, that we can remove the budget from conference so we can act upon it tonight.
We acted upon it, yep.
I know we have a slew of amendments.
We have a few amendments before us. Which amendments? Are you doing first? You're doing just-
Whoever offers them. Any amendments to the budget?
Any amendments.
Any amendments to the budget?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Counselor Pilatanda. Oh, Louie.
So some of the amendments I have are concerning the new water department takeover, and I can read some of them now. I want to decrease-
Amendments on the budget.
...the salary appropriation of the Water Enterprise Fund, 601-051, in the amount of $163,600, from $415,970 to $252,370. And to decrease the operations and maintenance appropriation of the Water Enterprise Fund in the amount of $65,500, from $7,201,696 to $7,136,196. To decrease the capital appropriation of the Water Enterprise Fund in the amount of $546,500, from $1,867,404 to $1,329,04. And therefore, the total decrease of $775,600 shall reduce the total appropriation of Water Enterprise Fund from $9,485,70 to $8,709,470. And that's under the Water Enterprise Fund.
Counselor Vido?
I just, I will be recusing myself for those votes, because my husband works for DPW, but I'll be back for the rest.
Okay. Any other amendments? I thought she had some.
That's all I see. I'm going to- Salary- Salary for- 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 Salary for-
hundred thirty-seven dollars to one million five hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That's the amendment offered. Roll call, counselor?
Yes, please.
A yes would be to adopt the amendment, a no would be to deny it. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido? Excused. Counselor Avizaneda?
No.
Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Pearl Otonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robertson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Coopero?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. In favor, three opposed, one excused. The amendment is adopted. The next amendment offered in three parts. To decrease the salary appropriation of the water enterprise fund in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred dollars from four hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred seventy dollars to two hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. Amendment to decrease the operations and maintenance appropriation of the water enterprise fund in the amount of sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars from seven million two hundred and one thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars to seven million one hundred thirty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars. Amendment to decrease the capital appropriation of the water enterprise in the amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred dollars from one million eight hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred and four dollars to one million three hundred twenty thousand nine hundred and four dollars. Therefore, the total decrease of the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred shall reduce the total appropriation of the water enterprise fund from nine million four hundred and eighty-five thousand seventy dollars to eight million seven hundred nine thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Vote call. Any more discussion?
Any discussion? Counselor Vianetta?
Motion to separate.
Want to do them individually? Okay, we'll vote, roll call, on the first part. To decrease the salary appropriation of the water enterprise fund in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred from four hundred and fifteen thousand nine seventy to two hundred and fifty-two thousand three seventy. That would be the first one. I'll make this a one.
Give me a second before you vote. Counselor Bishop, you got a question?
It appears the maker of the motion didn't say anything, but I am assuming that he wants to negate the proposed takeover of the water and sewer department and do away with the contract the city has with RH White. I'm assuming that's what these cuts are for. Therefore, I am opposed to that because I favor the city negating the RH White contract in taking over the water and sewer department. As you know, we pay a considerable amount of money to RH White yearly. The people that we have hired to run DPW, the water and the sewer enterprise funds, feel as though we are not getting the bang that we should be getting for the buck that we're paying. And they feel that they can do a lot more with that amount of money than RH White is doing for us and not spend any more and maybe save a tiny amount. And that would entail the city buying some trucks and hiring some people to do the work that we're paying well over a million dollars a year to RH White for. I have a lot of faith in the people that are now running the DPW, and I feel as though I have to go on their word, and I trust what they're saying. And so therefore, I'm going to vote against these amendments, and that's the reason for it. Thank you.
Any other? Counselor Pearl Otonda?
Yeah, as I said about this before, this has to do with the takeover of the water department, which I'm not in favor of. The city may be doing a great job by taking over this department, but, you know, come to the fact that the city is still going to have to call somebody in if there's a major water main break to fix a lot of the streets. And the other thing, too, is, I mean, it may cost the city more money in the long run. Right now, it may be costing the city two million dollars to take this over, but in the long run, when salaries increase and benefits increase, this is going to cost the city more money in the long run. I mean, the city right now has a commissioner of the water department, a director of the water department, an assistant director. It seems like the city is getting more top-heavy with some of these departments, especially the water department. Do we need to keep increasing these salaries? I mean, some of these, I mean, I've never heard of a commissioner of the water department. I've heard of a police commissioner, but I've never heard of a commissioner of the water department. And I think in the long run, this is going to cost the city more money. That's why I'm not in favor of moving over to this new water department. Thank you.
Point of information.
Call.
I think, I don't want to leave anybody with the wrong impression. As it stands right now, if there's a major break, even with the contract with RH White, they still have to call some outsider in to do the major break. The contract with RH White is not for major breaks. It's for day-to-day maintenance. And I said what I said before, and stand by it.
Okay. I'll say. A yes vote would be to adopt, a no vote would be to deny. Counselor Garcia?
Yeah.
No. Counselor Vido, excused. Counsel Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Pearl Otonda?
Yes.
Counsel Tejada?
No.
Counsel Robertson?
No.
Counsel Bishop?
No.
Counsel Ray Coopero? Three in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven opposed. The amendment is defeated. On the next amendment, let me see. Second amendment, to decrease the operations and maintenance appropriation of the water enterprise fund in the amount of sixty-five thousand five hundred from seven million two hundred and one thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars to seven million one hundred thirty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars. Amendment number two. You want to take that separately?
Any discussion, ladies and gentlemen? No? Counsel Bishop, you got the floor?
I just want to point out one further piece of information, and that is that there is a considerable amount of money in the water enterprise fund, in the sewer enterprise fund separately, in the two and, I believe, of three and a half million in each, of free cash that was, you know, brought down over the years of money being left in the budgets and so on. So it's not, that money is sitting there, and that is what they are asking to use to do the things that they're asking to do. And so it's not like we have to appropriate new money. The money is already there in both enterprise funds to pay for these moves that are being made.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll take that individually.
The next, yes to adopt, no not to adopt. Counselor Garcia?
No.
Counsel Vido, excused. Excuse, excuse. Counsel Avizaneda?
No.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Pearl Otonda?
Yes.
Counsel Tejada?
No.
Counsel Robertson?
No.
Counsel Bishop?
No.
And Counsel Ray Coopero? Two in favor, eight, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight opposed, one excused. Amendment defeated. The final amendment offered on that group, to decrease the capital appropriation of the water enterprise fund in the amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred from one million eight hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred and four dollars to one million three hundred twenty thousand nine hundred and four dollars.
Any discussion? No? All right.
Yeah.
Counsel Vido, excused. Counsel Avizaneda?
No.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Pearl Otonda?
Yes.
Counsel Tejada?
No.
Counsel Robertson?
No.
Counsel Bishop?
No.
And Counsel Ray Coopero?
No.
Two in favor, eight opposed, one excused. The other amendment offered by Counsel Pearl Otonda, let's do this one, let me see. To decrease the salary appropriation of emergency management department in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from one million three hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars to one million two hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Any discussion on this?
Vote call, vote. Vote call.
Okay.
A yes would be to approve, and a no would be to deny.
Can you repeat that, Mr. Chair?
A yes would be to adopt, and a no would be not to adopt. Counselor Garcia?
No.
Counselor Vido?
No.
Counsel Avizaneda?
No.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Pearl Otonda?
Yes.
Counsel Tejada?
No.
Counsel Robertson?
Yes.
Counsel Bishop?
No.
Counsel Ray Coopero?
Yes.
Four in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven opposed. The amendment is defeated. We have the other three amendments offered by Counsel Pearl Otonda. To decrease the salary appropriation of the sewer enterprise fund in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred from four hundred and fifteen thousand nine seventy to two hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and seventy. Vote call.
You want to take them all or one, or you want to take them separately?
That's up to you guys.
Well, yeah.
Want them all or one?
Any objection?
I'll read them all.
Anybody object?
Yeah, we're in the second page now.
Second page, yeah.
The third, actually.
Okay. All right, I'll read the three of them. To decrease the salary appropriation of the sewer enterprise fund in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred from four hundred and fifteen thousand nine seventy to two hundred and fifty-two thousand three seventy. Second amendment offered to decrease the operations and maintenance appropriation of the sewer enterprise fund in the amount of sixty-five thousand five hundred from eleven million eight hundred seventy-six thousand four hundred and one dollars to eleven million eight ten nine oh one. And the final amendment offered to decrease the capital appropriation of sewer enterprise fund in the amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred from one million eight hundred nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-two to one million two hundred sixty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-two. Any discussion?
You're good.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Vote call.
Vote call, vote.
Yes to adopt, no would be to deny. Counselor Garcia?
No.
No. Counsel Vido, excused. Counsel Avizaneda?
No.
No. Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
No. Counsel Lopez?
No.
No. Counsel Brown?
No.
No. Counsel Pearl Otonda?
Yes.
Counsel Tejada?
No.
Counsel Robertson?
No.
Counsel Bishop?
No.
And Counsel Ray Coopero? One in favor, nine opposed, one excused. The amendments denied. Any more amendments to the budget?
Yes, I have a couple.
One hundred thousand. Wait a minute, we did, no, we did one. We did. We did that one out of order. That was the second one we did. We went big one.
I didn't know they were listed on the agenda. I just took them up as I got them.
When we started this one, you requested this to be done separately, then we did that one, then we went through this one. So we're in?
We did them all.
We're in order.
Yeah, we did. We did it here.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Counsel Vido's got an amendment?
I have three different amendments here I'd like to offer. One of them is to decrease the salary appropriation and planning and development in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. Another one is to decrease the salary appropriation for the fire department in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. And another one is to decrease the salary appropriation of Chelsea Police Department in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Do I speak on them now, or should I wait?
I would go ahead and speak on them now. We're all here.
Okay, so, last year, during budget season, I did the same thing. I couldn't fathom why, now that we have a new fire chief who, and we've given the adequate staffing that the fire department needs, why the overtime budget continues to increase. Last year, I remember proposing a hundred thousand dollar cut, in which we, here in the council, the majority agreed that we actually did so. This year, I don't want to be so rough because I get that cost of living rises, so I'm only proposing that we cut it fifty thousand dollars. I think we need to set a precedent as to what direction we really wish to move in. Fact of the matter is that public safety takes a huge chunk of our budget. While I recognize the need for public safety, I do feel like there are instances in which we are not using the money in the best way. For example, to this day, when we ask police officers to walk the beat, to walk the area, that money is still coming out of overtime. We have a police officer that is getting paid overtime to escort a traffic park and enforcement person at night to give the residents tickets, whose resident tickets are expired, who are inappropriately parked. I just think that it's a misuse of funding, and that's why I'm proposing the budget cuts for fire department of fifty thousand, police for a hundred thousand. As far as planning and salary, I did the same thing last year. I remain extremely concerned with the downtown coordinator position. This is not a secret. I've had several meetings with the city manager, with nonprofit organizations, with small businesses, with residents. This, I believe, initially, I know that this council was in agreement that we needed a master plan, because we want to figure out what direction the city is moving in. I feel that for many years, we've put the horse before the carriage, and we haven't really thought about what direction we're moving in. The city is changing, and I want us to remain mindful of what it is that makes this city the beautiful city that it is, that contributes to its diversity and contributes to the social fabric of this community. We're seeing enrollment drop in our schools. We're seeing people being displaced at rapid rates. We're seeing these big, huge developments in our community, and I don't want to see the Broadway corridor become another Cambridge. I want it to be, I want it, I want to preserve the diversity there. And this downtown coordinator position has done the absolute opposite of that. There have been ordinances that have come before this, that have come before this council that were not inclusive of the small business community. This position has highlighted what businesses they want people in the community to frequent, deliberately leaving other businesses out. I believe that we, as a community, have an opportunity here to stop working in silos and to work collaboratively to figure out what the future of the city is and how everyone can have a seat at the table as opposed to deciding, picking and choosing who should be part of it. Maybe that's the problem when we hire outside of the community. People don't understand the needs of this community, but I can no longer continue to sit down and twirl my thumbs. I spoke with the city manager about this last year. He said, no, wait, speak with the downtown coordinator, let's give it a chance. Here we are a year later, same, same issues. This coordinator position is now serving as a roadblock between small businesses in the area. If this person is going to facilitate activities, then that money should be coming out of the recreational and cultural department and not out of planning, because that is not the future. When I think about planning and development, I'm thinking about the future of the city. And if we are hiring someone that's deliberately leaving out a huge demographic of the Broadway area, then that is not reflective of Chelsea. And so I cannot support this salary anymore, and so that was my proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Would you like?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Counsel Pearl Otonda?
I'm sorry, but I can't agree with my fellow counselor. So here we have two orders here to decrease the police department and the fire department as well, but my fellow counselors won't decrease the 911 department. So, I mean, is this, I don't get it. So we'll decrease them, but we won't decrease the other. So if you want to save money, and we're giving too much money out, why don't you increase 911 as well and make it a whole? So I'm going to vote against these. And the other thing about the planning and development, the eighty thousand dollars, here we are back again. We won't decrease the budget for the DPW department, who's spending millions of dollars. We got a guy there that was just demoted to a director and keeps the same salary, and then we hire a commissioner to give him more money. I don't get it. And we're already about eighty thousand dollars here for the planning and development of the downtown corridor? I'm sorry, I'm voting against all three of these here.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Counsel Vianetta?
I guess I have a different opinion on the salary of the eighty thousand dollars. I know that we're having now a second year in a row, an event called Fiesta Verano. I know that just last month, we had a food event that drew hundreds of people, and that there's some work being done in the downtown area by the coordinator that I would say is family-friendly. When I go to the events, I see Chelsea families. Having been a, you know, past executive director for the Chamber of Commerce, I know how difficult it is to try to talk to the, do the business owners, and even after talking to them, to get them involved. It's a struggle. It's a real struggle to do this sort of work. It's yeoman's work, and it's been going on for a while now. I know that when we talked about the two-way project that was proposed by the city manager, and I tried to engage as much as possible to the local businesses who were involved, you would talk to them and say, show up at such and such time and go to the meeting, and guess what? They just wouldn't come. You knew what they were trying to say, but trying to get them involved is really hard. And I don't want to, you know, I don't want to blame the lack of presence or the lack of involvement by automatically blaming somebody who probably is trying, but they just, they don't show. So I think there is some gains being made, and we're getting to a point with events and some changes happening in the downtown area. And so I don't know how many of you have gone, I go to the downtown task force meeting once in a while. It's on Tuesdays. That person is present. It's also part of cleaning the downtown area. I know I've heard from families how much better and cleaner it is, and how many more families are going down there, all Chelsea families. So I'm going to be against the cuts, and in particular, on the, I think, the view of the, what the downtown coordinator is doing. So anyway, that's my speech.
Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I also think that there's some great work that's being going on downtown. I think, again, not only with the downtown coordinator, but also with the Chamber of Commons. Joe Mahoney's doing a wonderful job. They just hired a Latino person there that, not only do I see him at all the events that I have attended in the city, I've also seen him out in the downtown area. Personally, I've actually participated in a lot of the game nights they have out here, and when I sat out and I played dominoes here on Tuesday night, if it's raining, it's over at the library. Everyone that I played with is from Chelsea. I mean, they look forward to it. I know it's only two hours, it gets stocked there, but it's really nice. I go into some of the restaurants down on Broadway. I don't go all the way down, but I go in some of the restaurants, with the restaurants I go in, I ask them, I say, hey, are you aware of the downtown coordinator? You know, if you have any questions, how to get involved in the community, how to work, how to, if you need any assistance or anything, meeting and greeting folks around you. Business-wise, we have a Chamber of Commons. I advocate on that on my behalf as a city counselor, but I think there is some great things that's going on downtown, so I don't want to knock downtown. I don't know what it costs or how much it costs, but I know we are having some really fruitful events there. I got two, I got two notices here today when I came in about additional things, and I know they coordinate a lot with the community here. And I've always stated to my colleagues that, you know, if we feel that certain individuals are not being invited to the table, we personally need to invite them to the table ourselves. We have to let them know that these events are going on, the city is investing money into folks is working to try to get your input, to try to enhance your store, your business, to work with the whole picture of the city of Chelsea involved. So I think that we are moving in the right direction. I don't see why we would cut this. Again, I think, you know, all these, all these amendments we have right before us today, it's, you know, it's not warranted. I mean, you know, we're probably looking at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars I mean, you know, we're probably looking at $230,000 out of 181-plus million dollars. And I think if we keep this in, it's going to help us more than it's going to hurt us. So I just wanted to voice my opinion on that. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Counsel Garcia?
Thank you. I, I think, I am only going to direct my, what I want to say regarding the salary appropriation of the amendment for the 80,000 for the downtown coordinator. I really want to emphasize the fact that my colleague, my colleague Counselor Vidal raises valid points, and I think it's so important to really consider that when it comes to budget season and, and see what we have in front of us. I see both sides. I see the benefits of having the downtown coordinator, and I do see the impact and the positive impact it has had, not only in events, but in bringing people together and seeing a lot of social media presence that we were not seeing, and being able to see, like, new activities that are being highlighted and more people and more activity in the area. But I also think that what Counselor Vidal brings up, and it's, you know, it's the second year in a row where she does bring this up, it's, it's valid, you know? We are in an era where there is no secret whatsoever. In the last papers, we've read that many of the restaurants in the city, especially those that are minority-owned, feel under attack and feel that they're not being as supported. So I think what, something that my colleague is bringing up is, yes, she's not happy with, from what I'm, from what I'm seeing, you know, she's, she's not happy with the things that are going on in, in the area with the specific coordinator, but I think what she's highlighting is much bigger than that. And I think the issue is the fact, how can we bring those little folks, those small business owners, to the table to participate? And I think that's important, and I really want to commend you for that, because I think that more than just making this a personal attack towards an employee, I don't think that's where you're heading. I think where we're going is more about bringing voice into that, and in the future, which we should be thinking, is what can we be doing? Who else can we involve from our community to help this downtown coordinator? Sorry, guys, I really have a really bad headache, so I'm trying to put my words together. But yeah, so, so I, I really appreciate that. I won't be voting in favor, so I'll be fully transparent of that. I, I do support the downtown coordinator, so I, I will be negating the amendment, but supporting the downtown coordinator. But I do think that what she raises is important, and we need to start developing a plan in the future on how do we bring someone local to really walk by hand, hand by hand, with this downtown coordinator to ensure that everyone's at the table, that everyone's being included, that we are promoting every single, you know, beauty salon or restaurant in downtown. So that's what I wanted to say.
Counsel Vidal?
I am asking to speak again because my name was mentioned, and so I have the right to do that. I just want to say that I'm not denying, this is not an attack on anyone personal and, on anyone personally, and that this, there is no question that that individual has talent, but if they want to facilitate Fiesta Veranos and pupusa nights, then that should be coming out of the recreational department, department, and not, not in, out of the planning department that's supposed to be trying to stimulate business in that area, and this person has the power to pick and choose who we want to support. That's the problem that I have, and I, I just, these activities are great, but it's almost like, hey, you know, grab a pupusa on your way out of the city because you can't afford to stay here anymore, and I just think that we could do way better than that.
Anybody who'd like to speak? Anybody object to me speaking from the chair?
So, yeah, regarding this downtown coordinator, I, I think it's a work in progress. I think it's working. I think one of the challenges that a lot of the small businesses have, and one of the reasons I was a little bit opposed to the food trucks when we were talking about that, is that haven't been, you know, we've all been in the restaurant industry at some point in our life, or the high school, college, or whatever, and, you know, you start at four, five o'clock in the morning, you know, this stuff, you know, and you have a long, long days. So I, I think that, that a lot of these businesses are run by families. I mean, the whole family's working there. And so I think what we may want to look at at some point is figuring out a way to educate them on how to structure themselves to be able to participate in some of the offerings that the city has. Sometimes all you can do is reach out, but if people are, you know, you can only take a horse to water, you can't make them drink, right? That's the saying. And I think that maybe it's not, maybe it's a combination of things, a combination of, of reaching out, but on the other side, inability to. And maybe there, there should be a way that we should talk about how to merge those two and figure out a best way to reach out and not just say, "Hey, come here," but here's how you can do it. You know, what's your specific situation, and maybe this is how you can do it. Just a thought.
Counsel Bishop?
Yes, I'll be very brief. I was downtown today reimagining Broadway and looking at the, we have a conference Wednesday night, and I went down Chelsea Walk, and I reimagined Christmas, because it's still got the Christmas decorations on the, on the walkway. Now, it's June, but maybe we're having Christmas in July. There's a lot of money being spent downtown, and there's all kinds of money coming into the city. The city manager wants to give the cultural council, we throw away around so many thousand-dollar figures, I forget, 80,000 maybe, or 70,000, to the cultural from the casinos, because they're giving us 650,000 a year, so let's give them 30 grand. So I don't know, I, I favor this cut for that reason. There are other funding sources, as, as the speaker before me had said, and I think that's what, you know, we can't be spending $300,000 downtown for this kind of thing. So, you know, we're going to spend the money from the casinos? Great. Let them use that money for this fund.
Counsel Robinson?
You know, I think that there's a misconception here. There have been two businessmen from the Chamber of Commerce, Sergio and Mr. Campier, who's gone to every restaurant and every business on Broadway, trying to get them to join the chamber and come out and participate in events, and they just don't do that. So whose fault is that? Is it on us to be able to go and visit these businesses and encourage them to come out and participate in the community? It should start here, if we want to be pointing fingers everywhere. That's all I, we just wanted to add to the conversation. I think it's unfair to say that people haven't been approached when they've been approached.
Sure, absolutely. Anyone else? All right.
A yes vote would reduce the...
Are we voting on just the one?
On this one item, right. A yes vote would reduce the planning and development salary appropriation in the amount of $80,000. Counselor Garcia?
No.
Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Avellaneda?
No.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
No.
Counsel Pilatanda?
No.
Counsel Tejada?
No.
Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Bishop?
Yes.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six opposed. The amendment is defeated. The next amendment offered by Counsel Vidal to decrease the salary appropriation of the Chelsea Police Department in the amount of $100,000.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
A yes vote would decrease that amount, and no vote would deny $100,000 from the police department. Over time, with Counsel Garcia?
No.
Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Avellaneda?
No.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
No.
Counsel Pilatanda?
No.
Counsel Tejada?
No.
Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Bishop?
Yes.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow?
No.
One, two, three, four in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six. Seven opposed. Amendment defeated. Final amendment offered by Counsel Vidal to decrease the sal...
One second. Counsel Vidal?
I need to recuse myself as I have a family member on the fire department.
Yes, sir.
The amendment reads, "The salary appropriation of the fire department, decrease it by an amount of $50,000."
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Roll call. Counselor Garcia?
No.
Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Avellaneda recused. Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
No.
Counsel Pilatanda?
No.
Counsel Tejada?
No.
Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Bishop?
Yes.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow?
Three in favor.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Seven opposed. One recused. Amendment defeated. Any more amendments on the budget?
All right, are we there yet?
I want to call a recess, and I want to know if we need a new, a new adjustment.
Okay, we're going to call a recess and ask...
This one?
Okay.
We can act on the other items while we're doing this.
Yep. Do you have the actual order? So that he knows. Let's, um, let's keep going, and then when he comes back with the new budget, so we don't waste any time.
We need an adjustment in the overall...
The overall budget that was proposed.
Operating budget, because it was amended and reduced, so now we need a new figure to vote on. Okay, but in the meantime, we're opening up on the new business.
We're back in session for new business, councilors.
First order under new business, order introduced by Counsel Vidal, order that the city of Chelsea accepts the provisions of the general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F3Q, which establishes a special revenue fund known as the PIG, access and cable.
You want to send it?
We sent the communication to conference, but not the orders. You want to send these?
We have a first reading.
You want to send these to conference?
We have to have a first reading and order to pass them before the end of the month.
I would think so.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Counsel Bishop moves it to a subcommittee on conference along with the communication. Do you want to speak on it?
No, I don't, I don't want it not to have a first reading.
Yep, we just read it, and then...
We read it, and now we're going to the conference. And we have the next one related, appropriate the FY 2020 cable television, public educational, same thing. Counsel Bishop?
That's the cable one, sending it to a subcommittee on conference along with the communication.
The following order introduced by Counsel, all the financial orders are introduced by Counsel Brown.
If it's okay with the body, I'd like to make a motion...
Return them all to second reading?
Yes.
What about the, the order on the...
CPA?
Community preservation.
Yeah, that's the next order, actually.
Okay, right after that one, okay. That's a money one.
If you want, I got, I can call a number though.
So are you asking to put the CPA out? No?
No, you can take that out. We can take that out.
Separately?
Yep.
All right, so let's read that one.
What's the number on that at the top?
12C.
12C, yeah.
Appropriate from the FY 2019 Community Preservation Fund for CPA projects and motion that the council act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee on awarding of the grant funding to FY 2019 Community Preservation Projects in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 53D, and in accordance with the revised Court of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea, Chapter 2, Article 7, Division 3, Section 2-330, that the council appropriate the following amounts of the Community Preservation Fund balance preserved as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, $50,000 for Project CP19-11 Congregation, I do with it, Shalom Building Envelope repairs, and $50,000 for the Project CP19-13 Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Housing Specialist.
Have a motion? Send it to a subcommittee on conference?
With the, with the...
With the communication. Got it. Okay, next order's a business. Counsel Brown, you have all these financial orders.
If you want the listing card off, if not, I'd like to just bundle them up and send them all to conference.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
If you like, I can call them off, or we could just bundle them all up if there's no objection.
Your call, Counselor. What would you like to do?
Yeah, let's bundle them up and send them.
Any objections? Okay, so D1 to D9.
I'll second readings. Go ahead. I'll second readings.
I'll go into second readings. Okay.
I was going, what I was saying is I'll call them off if you want them called off. If not, you can just bundle them up. I like to bundle them up if there's...
Yeah, we'll bundle them up, and then you can do that at the second reading if you like.
Next order introduced by Counsel Ray Cooperrow and Counsel Robinson, order that a subcommittee on conference be held with the veterans agent Francisco Toro to discuss veteran services.
Nice.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow?
Suspension, there's no objection, I can speak on it.
See, and then you have the floor, Counselor.
It seems to me that we need to do more for our veterans.
Which one is this?
We, we need to have more, more, this city doesn't even have a post. It doesn't have no way where veterans gather, doesn't have anything. It just has, maybe we could help Francisco, if we could do more for him, or whatever we can do to make it better for the veterans that are in the city. I think there's over 2,000 veterans in our city, and you never see them. My own children are, are veterans, and they go nowhere. They have nowhere to go. There is nowhere to go. Years ago, there used to be a DAV post, there used to be an American Legion. Now there's nothing. So I was wondering if there's any way we, or we have Francisco come to a subcommittee meeting, and we'll ask him questions, what, what can we do to make it better for the veterans of our city?
Last Memorial Day, there was not too many people for the service. Like, my colleague said, there's about over 1,000 or 2,000 veterans in Chelsea. I think we, we, or the director of the, this department, should reach out to every veteran to come, if they can, to this Memorial Day celebration. I think we should do more to reach out to these veterans. Thank you.
Okay, next order.
The next order introduced by Counsel Robinson, order that the city manager provide an update on the status of number one establishments that are looking to open in Chelsea.
Counsel Robinson?
Adopters shenanigans under suspension. I have no words.
No objections?
No.
Now, should we take a recess?
Now you need a recess.
Now, we're going to take a recess until, uh, done, our auditor comes back with the revised budget. Do we even have a call here? One, two, three, four, five, six. Counselors? Ready?
Yeah. All right, I need a, a recommendation to adopt the budget as amended. That's our first roll call. Anyone?
Can I have a motion from someone? Counsel Lopez moves to adopt the budget as amended.
Adopting the budget as amended.
By roll call.
Yep. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Oh, you want to talk on the budget?
Who wants to talk on it? Counsel Bishop, go ahead, you have the floor. Um, can, can we cut the side conversations? We're in the middle of a council meeting. Counselor Bishop?
Thank you. I'll be brief, I'll be brief as I usually am. I was going to bring a sewing needle up, you know, one of those knitting needles, and hold the budget up and stick it in it, see if it blew up.
Counselor Brown, we're in the middle of a meeting. Okay, go ahead, Counsel Bishop, sorry.
I said last year, I voted against the budget. I said it was unsustainable. Well, guess what? This year, it's even more unsustainable, because it's increased. And that's the footing we seem to be on. Every year, we have to go up 5%, 7%. This can't continue, as I said the last time around. In my opinion, it's no, no surprise to anybody that follows these meetings that I'm usually opposed to certain spending, and lots of times, I don't vote alone, sometimes I do, but I'm against a lot of the money that's being spent. I don't think it's being spent wisely, so therefore, I cannot vote for the budget, as I did not last year. I don't know where this is going to end. I hope I'm not around when the bottom falls out, but it's going to fall. And I want to at least be able to say I didn't contribute to it, so therefore, I will be voting against.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow? Councilor Cooper.
I'm going to vote for the budget, but Councilor Bishop is right. You don't know when it's going to end. You keep going and going and going. I don't think it's sustainable. I budget it within two, three, four years, you ain't going to sustain what you have. Let's say people want to move to the city and can't afford the three thousand dollars a month rent. They can't afford all this kind of rent. Where are you going to get the money? You're going to squeeze the poor people that are here? Or, there's a very low percentage of homeowners as it is already. It's corporations that are using this city for businesses. So eventually, like any other cities, when you can't rent it and you can't get what you're going to do, your city's going to collapse. And people should face it. Mr. Bishop is right. That happened to big cities. It happened to Lawrence, it happened to Fall River, it happens to Springfield. Those were big industrial cities that had big budgets. And what happened to their big money when they couldn't sustain it? They collapsed. And now what's there? Not much. You say, well, it can't happen in this city, we're close to Boston. It could happen anywhere because you don't know when that's going to happen. And what's going to happen then when you start laying people off? And that's going to be, you can't sustain, keep growing and growing and growing. A city's only one point eight square miles. How much can you grow in our city? What can you do? You, what are you going to stop building forty-story buildings in our place? That's the only way you're going to continue to survive. If your city doesn't grow, you're going to die. And this city's only one point eight square miles. It's all you have. You ain't got no more than that. So I'm going to vote for this budget because it's the right thing to do now. But like Mr. Bishop said, beware in the future because the future is not too far away if it keeps going like this. Thank you.
Councilor Pelletanda.
I have to agree with my fellow councils here on the budget. Uh, I mean, I will vote for the amendment because of course we got thirteen hundred dollars out of the budget. Fantastic. But what about the other two million that we should have cut out of the budget? Like my fellow councils say, every year the budget goes up and up and up and up. And where, where does it get us? When the poor people need a break on their water bill, we don't have the money for them. When the poor people need a break on their taxes, we don't have the money for them. But we have money for all these other things, like creating new departments and creating bigger jobs for people in the city of Chelsea. Not just the water department, but there's other departments in the city that are making a lot of money that probably shouldn't be. We create, keep creating new jobs and the budget keeps going up. Where is it going to end? Yeah, I don't mind, like I says, if we want to create these things and you're going to help out the people that live in Chelsea, but we're not doing that. Every time we ask somebody for a break on their water bill, oh, we don't have that. But we got two million dollars now to create a new water department. We want our taxes to go down, oh, we don't have money for that. But we have money for this here. We're going to get six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the casino, where's that money going? We're getting money from Massport to help people with soundproofing. But who's soundproofing does it help? Is it going to help me because I live on Clinton Street and the planes are going over? Or is it going to help the people down by the salt pile? So when is it going to end? I mean, the budget needs to be stopped at some point. I can see if you're going to help the people in Chelsea out, the people that have been living here for a long time that deserve a break, I'm all for that. But this budget doesn't do that for people there. All it does is create more jobs for people in the city of Chelsea, more, more salaries, like they said, higher rents, higher housing, I mean, more development. You can't even stop the development here that's in this city that's going on now because everybody keeps passing it. At some point it's got to come to an end. And the bottom is going to fall out eventually and we're not going to get any relief from it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Anybody else? Councilor Brown?
Come on set?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Um, a few weeks ago before we got to this point, we had some meetings here in this chamber. Council members came in, we analyzed the budget, we talked to different department heads, we figured out what they were trying to spend, what they were trying to do, who they were trying to hire, so on and so on. We agreed, we moved on, we came back here, we made some amendments tonight, some got, one got passed, rest got defeated. Uh, the budget came back out, we had chances to talk to the city manager, had chances to talk amongst us, and I believe the budget is solid. I'm, be supporting the budget. I know the budget is well thought out, well supported. Uh, I believe this allows us to continue to do what we've been doing the last few years here. We are in our good years. Um, I don't know, I'm not a forecaster, I don't know what's going to happen in years to come, but I know the investment we're making today is sound. It allows us to continue to build on our streets, it allows us to continue to build on our parks. And as we had our teachers and administrators from the school department here tell you, it allows us to support the most fun, fundamental thing that we have here, education, to get our children in right and prepare them for the future. So this budget shows that, um, this budget is well managed because of the city council working with the city manager. Uh, it continues to allow us to provide quality service to our residents, quality service to the folks that work here. If you come into City Hall, you see all the work that's been done, the renovation, um, yes, there still need to be done. That's why we have this budget and we're going to try to get that done. But more importantly, the manage of this budget changes us. It allows us to show that we're doing what's right, what folks allowed us to do, put us in office to make sure that we not only watch the dollars, but we also manage the dollars in the right way. We talked about the downtown, we talked, we didn't talk about Cary Square, we didn't talk about the new parks we're doing, we didn't talk about Eden Park. This budget covers and supports all those initiatives that we as city councilors at large and district councilors go into that office in the corner and talk to the city manager about privately. Not only does it support that, it support our agency, it support our law department, it support our economic development department to go out, give them the work, the, um, resource that they need, not only to send someone there when, you know, our lead council, general council cannot be there, but we have other council members disqualified and it's doing a, an excellent job. So, yeah, we're spending money. It's six hundred or six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, I think I heard the manager say, only from free cash to support this budget. That's only the amount of money that we're taking out. Other than that, we have the money to support this budget. It's a hundred and eighty-one plus million dollars. I think it's about four percent or three, three point five percent higher than last year. But that's inflation. That's inflation on everything that we do here. That's the quality of help we keep, the quality of service that we give. Um, if you go down to the city clerk's office, brand new. You, you go into our bathrooms here, brand new. You know, uh, we still have work to do. I think this budget allows it to do it. I don't think we're overspending. I think it's the right thing to do. I'll be supporting this budget. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson?
Question, uh, to direct at the city manager, if I may. When, when I add up these numbers altogether, it brings me beyond the number that was presented. So I want him to explain in regards to the water enterprise funds and the other funds, why we're not including that in the total overall budget.
You appropriate, uh, money for both the general fund budget, which is the hundred and eighty-one million dollars that we've been talking about, separate and apart from that, you do an appropriation for water and sewer enterprise fund. That's a separate budget, that's about an additional twenty-four million dollars. When you add up both of those numbers, the total amount you're going to appropriate, uh, comes to around two hundred and five million. A hundred and eighty-one million of that is, uh, is general fund appropriations funded by taxpayer dollars. The water and sewer enterprise fund, which totals about twenty-four million, that's funded by water and sewer revenues, by water and sewer bills.
Thank you.
The total is about two hundred and five million, which I think is the number you were looking at.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrosino.
Thank you, that, that answers my question. I will support the budget.
Anybody else who should speak? Any objections to me making a brief statement? Thank you. Um, I'll be honest, I'm having a hard time feeling comfortable approving the budget. A couple of weeks ago, this council voted to grant the city manager a power to make design plan changes for health insurance that directly affects city staff. And for me, the reason why, I know that a lot of us did it wasn't thinking about the future of the city and being financially prudent. I can't say that out of one side of the mouth and then feel comfortable voting on a budget where I know that we continue to spend, where I see that we retire someone and then we keep them on the payroll for six months, where I see that there is money being misused in programs that are not being effective, yet ISD continues to stay understaffed and not being able to keep up with enforcement. I think that, I, I, I trust that the city manager has done a great job. I, I have supported him, I have called him out when I don't think that he is. I don't, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with this. I will, if, honestly, the only reason why I will vote on this is because I know that we need eight votes and I don't want the education aspect of it or anybody else to suffer, but we cannot sustain this and that is a reality. And I don't know what council will be here next year, but I really hope that whoever is here continues to hold the city manager accountable and really push on these things. Because if we're willing to compromise and, 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 and put an extra burden on the staff of this city with respect with the health insurance, then we need to be consistent and do that across the board. Thank you. Councilor Avellaneda?
I wasn't going to speak, but, um, just things being said tonight. And in all the years that I've been on the council, I think this is the, the first time I've ever actually had serious pause on a budget. And it's not because, again, it's just the presentation or whatever, but more of what, um, I have seen in the last year and this last budget process. And I, and I really think that, and it's a self criticism, that we don't do enough during the budget season and how we examine each department here. Um, we had, we have a serious change in one of our departments and I'm, and that's Public Works. And I tried, and some of you were not here that night, but I tried to, um, direct a line of questioning and I was cut short. Um, I didn't get the answers that I was looking for, that I thought we should, that should have been asked. We are looking at a department that has had three, four changes as department lead. Um, we got an email about the new structure, um, and then we had an email, you know, one meeting about the adoption of the water and sewer. Um, but we didn't delve in and give it, I think, the real attention that should have. I alluded a little bit to it in common emails and some of you got the information I was asking, but I just felt that it was wrong for me to try to have these one-on-ones conversations or try to have us, you know, about what I, uh, the, the doubts that I had and the salaries that are going on in this department. Um, we should have looked apples, uh, you know, compared other communities and say, how are they set up? How do we look? Does it make sense? There are other communities that do have the water and sewer inside. And I'm particularly looking at the administration costs. It has ballooned. You know, we made a lot of, of comments in the last year or two about emergency management and how we had to pay, a, a, a retiree and carry him for a while because we didn't have a backup plan. And I understood, at the time, I understood because the backup plan that we had intended didn't fall through. The person who we had intended to be groomed as the next emergency manager left. And yet, I find myself seeing us paying three now high salary positions in that department because a tough choice couldn't be made? You know, is that fair to the rest? Um, because maybe the candidate that they, you know, the city manager has chosen, he has a right to do it, but we have to foot the bill. Um, so I have great pause with that. And yet we couldn't expand and couldn't explore it. At the same time, I know that with all the developments got up, that was here and grown, the last million dol, that, we raised over a million dollars in new growth. And the city manager got up in front of the school committee and said, all of that is being eaten by the school department. So all the new buildings that we have and all new growth, it got eaten up by school department. And yet we have to go and try to raise. How is this all going to work? What we approve here tonight, we're going to have to pay for in October. When we set the tax rate in October, that's how you, that's how you pay. First you set the budget and then you say, okay, how are we going to set the rate? And why I cause, again, what I say with pause is because I recently personally had to go through an abatement process. And during that process, I started to look at all the other buildings in the area and what they're charged. It bothered me that a building that was bought for two, for three point two million dollars somehow is assessed at two point four million dollars. It bothers me that a commercial property that was paid for by, but bought for, for seven million dollars is assessed at two million dollars. There are, and I'm telling you, across the board, I looked at the list, there are many, many, many buildings. And these are large landlords who are not paying their due in this community. We know that the focus of the assessor's office is on, because the data is there, on a small, on a single family home, a two-family home and a three, because the data is so prevalent, they can easily get that. But they're doing a terrible job when it comes to capturing true value. And I'm telling you that as a real estate professional, they, from what I've seen, the assessor's office is doing a terrible job of assessing true value. And what that means to the homeowner at home is your rate is higher than it needs to be. Shouldn't be fourteen dollars, it should probably be twelve, possibly ten. If they had really captured the value, and I've already said to the city manager, come October, I'm going to hold fire to the feet of the assessor's department and I'm going to come here with a long list of buildings to make sure that they get their act together and they properly value the large buildings out here, the ones who are here for a profit. And I, and I challenge my colleagues, just go around in your own district, use GIS, use the assessor's database, pick a few large apartment buildings and see what I'm talking about. And come armed and ready. Because that's the only way that I feel that the common homeowner out there is really going to be treated fairly on this. We are jacking up the rates over and over and we're not doing a fair job of making sure that it's equally distributed for the services that are being provided out there. And it causes, again, I've never felt so strongly about this budget or my pause on it in all the years I've been here. And it's only because of what I'm seeing out there. The unfairness and how the assessments are being done in this community. And, and, you know, and, and what I think is, uh, an unfairness to us to be rushed and not delve into a real, a dramatic change in one of our departments. Um, I wish we had been able to give them more time, but it is what it is. It's a rush job and, but, um, anyway, that's my, uh, comments.
Thank you, Councilor. Anybody else? For the record, I just want to clarify that I mentioned in my comments that we needed eight votes, we only need a majority vote, we only need six votes, I was wrong.
Any more discussion?
Any more discussion? All right, so roll call vote.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
This is on the budget as amended.
This is on the total budget as amended. Council Garcia, yes. Council Vido?
No.
Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Pelletanda?
Yes.
Council Tejada?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Bishop? Council Cooper?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor, two opposed. The budget is amended, this is adopted. Now we have the, uh, four breakdowns and then the two additional ones for the new, uh, the water department, uh, financing. This is required by the Department of Revenue.
I'm sorry.
The first one is on the general budget, which is now a one hundred and eighty-one million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. We voted on it as amended, but now the breakdowns. We got the free cash breakdown, the water enterprise breakdown, the sewer enterprise breakdown, and now the general budget.
I can't vote on the water and sewer, right?
No, not when that comes up.
Okay, got it.
This is on the general budget. Any roll call requested, Council Robinson? No, this is one hundred and eighty-one million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Can I have a motion?
You just adjusted it.
Council Robinson moves it for roll call vote.
Yeah, Robinson's roll call, okay. Yeah, Robinson's roll call, okay. Any discussion, anybody?
Any discussion?
No. Counsel Garcia? Counsel Vido?
No.
Counsel Abadana?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Pelletanda?
No.
Counsel Tijada?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Bishop?
No.
Counsel Reed Cooperrow?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, three opposed. Motion adopted. We have the free cash introduced by city manager in order concerning appropriation for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019 from the general fund, 694,418 dollars. Free cash. Now, that's for a roll call. There are no objections. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Vido?
Yes.
Counsel Abadana?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Pelletanda?
Yes.
Counsel Tijada?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Bishop?
Yes.
Counsel Reed Cooperrow?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and none opposed. Motion adopted. We have the water enterprise breakdown. Counsel Vido is recusing herself. And, let her roll call. Okay, this is the water enterprise in the total amount of 9,485,070 dollars. Any discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call. Any discussion? Anybody who'd like to speak? No? Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Vido recused. Counsel Abadana?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Pelletanda?
No.
Counsel Tijada?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Bishop?
Yes.
Counsel Reed Cooperrow?
Yes.
Nine in favor, one opposed, one recused. The sewer enterprise account, 14,102,103 dollars. Roll call, vote. Any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion. Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Vido recused, let me see. Counsel Abadana?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Pelletanda?
No.
Counsel Tijada?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Bishop?
Yes.
Counsel Reed Cooperrow?
Yes.
Nine in favor, one opposed, one recused. Motion adopted. And these are the two funding retained earnings for the sewer fund, 775,600 dollars. Roll call. Discussion? Counsel Robinson. Okay, roll call. Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Vido recused. Counsel Abadana?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Pelletanda?
No.
Counsel Tijada?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Bishop?
Yes.
Counsel Reed Cooperrow?
Yes.
Nine, one, zero, one recused. Motion adopted. Final proposal, retained earnings from the water fund, 775,600 dollars. Roll call, please. No objections? No discussion? Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Vido recused. Counsel Abadana?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Pelletanda?
No.
Counsel Tijada?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Bishop?
Yes.
Counsel Reed Cooperrow?
Yes.
Nine, one, zero, one. Motion is adopted. That's all you have. All right.
Thank you. Public announcements?
I have a public announcement.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes. Very brief. The Reed students have been working on a project called Listen. They have produced a video in a book of poems on their thoughts about Chelsea family in Reed. On Wednesday evening, June 5th, at 5 o'clock, they'll be in the Chelsea High School cafeteria, and they'll be unveiling their work, and everybody's invited for those who can attend.
I'd like to wish the Chelsea High class of 2019 the best of luck in all their future endeavors. They're graduating this Sunday at Chelsea High School, and as everyone knows, due to the support of the city council, their graduation will be outside so that their families can be in attendance. Also, on Sunday, as we announced earlier, there's the Fourth Annual Chelsea LGBTQ Flag Raising. That will be happening right outside of City Hall at 2:00 PM. Counsel Brown.
Also, for Chelsea residents, we have the free vaccination for cats and dogs that will take place on Sunday, June 9th, at 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Bellingham Park. Bring your cats, dogs down, get rabies shots, vaccinations, free Michael chips, dog supplies while they last. There's an opportunity if you need some help with your animals, bring them down, they have some professionals there, and you can see that, those folks on this Sunday. Also, actually, that's right when graduation is going on, so make sure you get there early. Also, there's another, an event that's going on this, is it Saturday night? Saturday night, it's called Chelsea Night Market. It's right here at Luther Place, right here on Broadway. It starts at 7:00, 8:00 PM, and it starts at 10:00. I heard a lot of good things are happening in that area. There was a talent show, fashion show, or comedian down at Tukasa Restaurant. I heard it was standing room only. It was great success, another opportunity to go out and meet local folks and engage